I was putting the break.
Ready?
All right, you guys ready? Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order this November 1st, 2018, meeting of the Capitola Planning Commission. Let's begin with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Westman.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
And Chair Story.
Here. Will you all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I do want to make an announcement about the telecast. Tonight's meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communication, Channel 8, and it's being recorded and will be replayed next Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed on the city's website at www.cityofcapitola.org. Tonight, our technician is Lynn Dutton. Next, we'll move on to additions and deletions to the agenda. The commissioners wish to make any changes?
Seeing none.
Staff, any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
No changes. With that, we'll move on to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the planning commission on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Does anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the microphone up front and we'll go on to commission comments. Commissioners?
I have one thing.
Yeah.
I had a question for Katie. City Council right now is looking at Major F and what we're going to do with the wharf, and that happens to be on the historic context statement that the city adopted as our historic structure. So I just had a question before they get carried away with their grandiose ideas, how may that impact the wharf?
That the wharf will have to be reviewed as a conditional use permit because it would be a change to a historic structure if they're going to make changes to it. And right now, they're looking at different options, so that would come before the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay. And they would go through the Secretary of Interior Standards and look at what changes are being proposed and the standards for adaptive reuse and making sure.
I guess my question is really more for them than it is for you, but maybe they would like to know what those options are before they even go down the option path, what the requirements are going to be, because they may choose maybe not to do some of the options based on some of the hoops they're going to have to jump through. But I guess that's something.
I think we should get ahead of that with, right now, they're looking at engineering options and different options, and it would be great to get Leslie Dill's feedback or another architect's feedback based on the Secretary of Interior Standards, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
One comment and one question for Katie. The comment, the wall signs at 105 Stockton got changed, I noticed, and it was a subtle difference, but they really do look a lot better and balanced, so thanks for that. And do we have any update on 4960 Capitola Road?
We do. They got their occupancy. So the last item that had to be finalized for the fire department has been taken care of, so at this point, they have occupancy in terms of their building permit, and it's been final, so I think it's something like 20 years later.
It's on the market.
And it's on the market.
Good job.
Yeah, it's a closed job. I'll give a lot of that credit to Rich for a couple of years of working hard at that to get done.
It was a big deal.
I'd like to announce that this weekend, on November 3rd and November 4th, is the Capitola Arts and Cultural Commission is putting on its annual Capitola Pleneur. So this Saturday, you will see a lot of artists about our lovely town painting pictures, and then those are going to be available at the New Brighton Gem. On Sunday, you can view them, and you can even purchase them if you wish. And so, yeah, check out the pleneur this weekend. With that, we'll move to staff comments.
I have one update. The city council reviewed the Sears appeal, and they granted a continuation to the January 24th meeting and with a list of items to bring to staff in the next few months, so that they'll have adequate time to do analysis. And I did recently hear from the county that the cleanup, the testing is underway now. They've received the sampling results back, so it's looking like it's moving along in terms of working out some of the details that needed to be worked out. And at the same time, staff has been working with them towards an MOU for a future specific plan at the mall, so kind of two things going on with that developer, so.
Very good.
Any questions of commissioners on that topic? Hearing none. Let's move on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October the 4th, 2018. Are there any changes or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, which brings us to the consent calendar for this evening. There's two items. One is 106 Sacramento Avenue, and that is a request for a continuance. The second one is 110 Monterey Avenue, and that is an application for a design permit for an addition to a two-story mixed-use structure within the Central Village zoning district. Those items will be handled with a single vote without deliberation unless any member of the public or the commissioners wish to pull one of the items. I wanted to ask, do any members of the audience wish to pull one of those items from the consent calendar? Seeing none, commissioners?
I would not like to pull item, I just have a question for staff on 106 Sacramento, if that would be allowed. We've continued, this is like the third or fourth time, and it's on the consent calendar. Because it's being continued so many times, will it come back as a real item for public hearing, or will it come back on the consent calendar and it'll just need to get polled if somebody has an issue?
So when we continue an item, we typically put it on consent. This project, when it came in, it complied with all of our regulations, so we've kind of followed the rule of if it complies with all of the regulations, they're not asking for a variance or any special review by the planning commission, we'll place it on consent, and then the planning commission can pull it off of consent. So that's been the practice we've used. If you'd like that to be on the regular agenda, we're happy to do so. A little update for you is that they're expecting comments back from the Coastal Commission this week that should help them figure out whether or not they can attend the December meeting. If they can't, staff will not be requesting a continuance at the next meeting. At that point, we feel it should be re-noticed because it gets a little too confusing for the residents, so.
And I'm fine with it being on consent. I didn't want to pull it off of that.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? And I did want to make a note that I live within the conflict proximity for 106 Sacramento, so I will recuse myself on that matter, so, but.
I would make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as in the staff report.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, but please note for the minutes that I recuse myself on item 4A. Which brings us to the public hearing for this evening. This is an application for a design permit, conditional use permit, major revocable encroachment permit, and variance requests to the 80% permissible structural alteration limit for non-conforming structures and for historic single-family residents at 210 Central Avenue. We'll begin with a staff report.
Thank you, Chairman Story. This proposal includes the preservation of an original historic cottage, demolition of the nonhistoric additions, and introduction of a new front porch and rear two-story addition. Modifications to a historic resource in City Capitola require approval of a design permit and a conditional use permit by the planning commission. The Afghan is also seeking a variance to the 80% permissible structural alteration limit for nonconforming structures. Just a little backstory here, the planning commission reviewed the project at the July 19th meeting and continued it so that the applicant could make changes to the front porch and install story poles to demonstrate the massing. Because the planning commission has already reviewed the project once, my presentation will give a brief overview of the project, a summary of changes, and cover the couple of outstanding issues. Staff has also received multiple public comment letters on this item that you should have received in your email. So to start out here, oh, that's weird. Existing site plan showing the footprint of the existing structure and the area to be removed. And then, this is a two-step one here, and then the footprint of the proposed two-story addition on the right. The existing historic structure is nonconforming because it encroaches into the front and side yard setbacks, therefore, the project is limited to 80% of the present fair market value of the existing structure. The project as presented is 128% of the fair market value of the existing home, so the variance is required. I'm just going to go through the elevations to remind everyone what we're looking at here. So we have the existing and proposed front elevation, the existing and proposed north elevation, and on this elevation, you can see that the two-story addition is pushed back from the main house, and articulation was used to break up the massing and differentiate the new addition from the historic structure. Those design elements were based on comments from Leslie Dill. Here's the existing and proposed south elevation, and the existing and proposed rear elevation. Also, just want to go through and show you a couple photos of the existing historic homes on the right, and then we have a high-angle rendering of the proposed project on the left. This one and the next two slides, the renderings were done prior to the front porch modifications, which I'm going to explain shortly here, so just know that it no longer comes out with that gable front roof. It'll be, you'll see in four slides. So we have a street-level rendering of the proposed project, a streetscape of the proposed And then, on the July 19th, 2018, planning commission meeting, you reviewed the application and asked the applicant to make revisions to the front porch design to preserve the form of the main pyramidal roof as it existed historically. On October 2nd, 2018, the applicant submitted revised plan sheets that included a front porch design that preserved the form of that roof with the covered porch extending out from under it, as it existed historically in several photos that were uncovered. Architectural historian Leslie Dill reviewed the changes to that front porch and found that the revised porch design is consistent with the Secretary of the Interior standards. The commission also requested that story poles be displayed on site to show the height and massing of the proposed addition. I just outlined it here, the second story on the right, and then the area that would be shown with the story poles on the left. Before I get to the story pole pictures, however, I did want to go over briefly the historic rehabilitation and design permit standards and considerations regarding massing, because that's what we're going to be looking at here. In the Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation, standard number nine states that new additions, exterior alterations, or related new construction will not destroy historic materials, features, and spatial relationships that characterize the property, and that the new work will be differentiated from the old and will be compatible with the historic materials, features, size, scale and proportion, and massing to protect the integrity of the property and its environment. Architectural historian Leslie Dill of Archives and Architecture did conduct a third-party historic review of the project and found that with the design features listed in this paragraph, the addition, although large, presents a visually subordinate overall feeling. The Capitola Municipal Code also directs the planning mission to consider, under the site layout considerations for a design permit, the orientation and location of buildings, decks, or balconies, and open spaces in relation to the physical characteristics of the site, the character of the neighborhood, and the appearance and harmony of the buildings with adjacent development, such that privacy of adjacent properties is maintained. So with that, we'll get into the pictures of the story poles. These are the story poles from the street in front of the home. In these photos, the lower poles and netting represent the top of the second-floor wall, and the higher poles and netting show where the ridge line of the roof would be. I outlined it here just because it was kind of a gray day and makes it pop a little bit Then we also have the story poles coming up the hill on Central Avenue, and the story poles from the middle of Central Avenue and from the 212 Central Avenue side of the house in the driveway. These are the locations of the windows on the proposed project and the windows of the neighboring homes. You'll notice that the required rear yard setback is only 20 feet, but as you can see here, the applicant has proposed 32-foot rear yard setback. Staff recommends the planning mission consider the staff report, story poles, and input from the architectural historian, and either continue the application with a request for specific modifications, or approve project application 18001 based on the findings and conditions. That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Other questions from commissioners on?
I just have a couple of questions. It was my recollection at the last meeting, we talked about the windows on the side of the house which face 212 were going to be opaque because they're in a bathroom and a closet and a stairway. Did I dream that, or did we actually talk about that? Because I noticed it wasn't in the conditions.
It was not in the conditions. I recall the conversation about it, but I don't think at that meeting, because we continued it, that there was specific direction, but, so, our apologies.
Okay. And I wanted to make certain, so on the variances that are being asked for, they're being asked for because the historic structure needs to stay there. If they didn't have that, then there really wouldn't be a need for the variance.
It's just one variance. To the 80% rule.
Oh, and the setback?
The setbacks are nonconforming, so the variances to the 80% rule to allow the historic building to retain.
Right, but if they got rid of the historic building, then.
Wouldn't be, it wouldn't matter.
Thank you. One question for staff? So when we usually do historic rehabilitation, they get into it and they find out that it's too far gone and they can't really rehabilitate it, so it comes back so that they can actually restore it. Would it be appropriate in this case to maybe expand on the conditions so that if they do get into it and they have to do that, we've already covered that, the preservation plan and how they go about doing that? I know there's condition eight and condition four that touch on that, but Matt actually sent me some more thorough wording, and I'm just wondering if it would be appropriate to sort of preemptively, proactively put that in now, so if it happens, they don't have to come back to the planning commission again?
If I may, in other circumstances, there have been instances where we wish we had a condition to allow reconstruction of a historic structure, should you run into issues in that the integrity of the wood isn't sound for building, so it avoids having the applicant come back for an approval. So if you'd like to, we could put in, I know Matt had looked up a similar condition earlier today from another project, and I'm forgetting the address, was it Capitola Road?
It was 48th Avenue, actually.
48th Avenue, for that reconstructed barn that we could utilize, similar comment. They would, the condition would require them to bring in a preservation plan in which we would check that they've documented everything that's on site, and their plans show how they're reconstructing it to match perfectly, so.
Conditionally, it would just put it, something that could happen between staff and the applicant and not have to come back to the planning commission?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners on the staff report? I had a question. You know, our historic preservation ordinance speaks in terms of, for changes exteriors to a historical resource, that there be an alteration permit? And I didn't see that mentioned in the staff report. Is that, is the design permit the equivalent, or the conditional use permit equivalent to the alteration permit specified?
The conditional use permit is what's listed under, is the requirement for an alteration to a historic, so that is the process that we've used, and then we need to make specific findings for the alteration to the historic. So there is not, to my knowledge, a specific alteration permit. We've always reviewed these as a conditional use permit. So I'll look further into that language of the code, but under the uses, it's specific that an alteration to a historic structure requires a conditional use permit, and that's under the, under permitted uses, as well as it's listed under the conditional uses within the zone.
Right. Well, maybe those are equivalent.
That's what I'm thinking.
Permit designs, without using those exact words, but I did want to just emphasize that our ordinance 17.84.070 refers to historic alteration permit, and it says a historic alteration permit is an approval required to alter the exterior of a historic resource. And so I think it would just behoove us to go back and make sure we cover all the bases on this particular one, and there are specific additional findings specified, which I didn't see exactly worded, you know, in this report. And so, and that's under subsection I, findings for approval. Says the planning commission may approve a historic alteration permit only if all of the following findings can be made. And I won't read through them, but there's six of them, and I think it would behoove us to put those findings into our final action tonight. With that, if there are no other questions, I'll open it up to the public to address the commission on this item.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Paul Estee, and Bridgette and I are the owners of this property and making this application. I just have a few comments. Matt actually did a great job of summarizing what we've done here, but just to put this in perspective, we started this project in the summer of 2017 by consulting the planning department as to how we go forward with, you know, renovation to this historic property. To answer your question, I think in, you look at 17a84, this property, we're not actually altering the historic property, we're trying to preserve it, and the conditional use permit, I think, covers that when you're actually just keeping that structure in place. So we believe that, you know, we've been working with your staff for a year and a half now. We believe we have followed all of the city ordinances, the zoning requirements, all the processes and procedures associated with the planning of a project like this. He did mention that the city hired Archives and Architects, which is Santa Cruz firm, Leslie Dill, who is a certified historic architect in the state of California, did the work on this particular project. We spent a lot of time with her about, you know, how do you, first of all, can we move it? Can we move the property to have no variances? And that actually violates the Secretary of the Interior standards, so that's out. And so we do have these variants, which you talked about, this limited the permissible structural alterations problem. But we, more importantly, we worked with her on, you know, standard number eight, which is the one that describes sizing, scaling, differentiation of the new to the historic property, and also massing. She worked with us and our architect, I can't count the number of iterations, I think it was three or four, before we came up with something we thought was acceptable to the industry, or the Secretary's standards, and then she documented that in a letter, which we submitted in the prior application. So I think we've tried to do everything we can in terms of preserving the historic structure and yet adding on a piece of property we think would be useful and fit in with the city's style and be architecturally acceptable. The other thing we've done is, prior to the July meeting, staff asked us to put together the renderings and the streetscape pictures that we showed, that Matt went through, and we showed that before. And then, at the last meeting, you asked we put up these story poles, so we, you know, we complied with that request, and we put them up a week or so ago. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to see them in person. And then, yes, we do have this, we have this variance to the 80% permissible limit, but that's not that unusual in Capitola. There are multiple variances like that have been granted in the past, and given the historic nature of the property, we feel that that's acceptable. And finally, you know, we've been collaborating as best we can with the planning department and planning commission. We've met every rule that we can think of. We're, the addition is actually meeting all of the setback requirements, all the height requirements that you have. The only variance we have is that on the historic structures, you know, we're not, we don't want to move that, and that's why we are where we are. So we certainly appreciate your consideration of this application, and thank you very much for your support.
Right. Paul, before you go, were there any questions from commissioners? I had a question concerning the second-floor setbacks. I know it's on the north side, it's six feet, and on the south side, it's six feet, three inches. And just, is there, I guess, an ability to either split the difference or shift it in the other direction in recognition of the neighbors on your north side?
Trying to think of how we came up with those specific dimensions. I don't know the answer to that question right now. I have to think about that.
All right, that's fair.
There was a lot of work done on the setbacks.
I do have one question for Paul. And this is a, it's more a yes or no than a reasons why, but did you ever consider a single-story, using, you know, more of the rear property and keeping it single-story as opposed to going up?
Sure, we did. And Bridgette actually described the rationale for that at the last meeting, but I can repeat it. This is our house, and we're going to actually, it's going to be used by our kids, and we wanted to have a backyard for our grandchildren. And so if you, you can, you can go all the way with a single-story, but that eats up basically all of the backyard. And so our rationale was make a relatively small. basically all of the backyard. And so our rationale was make a relatively small, in our opinion, second story, and that gives us the space that we need for, you know, a reasonable livable, modern-day house.
Thank you. I went back and watched the video from the last meeting, and I remember the conversation, but it just wasn't clear if you'd ever really looked at it, or it was just one of those things that up front kind of got nixed.
No, not up front. We actually did a, we did a plan ourselves, basically looking at, you know, what does that look like, laying it out all the way to the back, and it gets pretty tight in the backyard neighborhood. So, that's why we went upstairs.
Oh, I actually have one question. Would you have any objection to having frosted glass in your master bathroom window, or the laundry room, or the other walk-in closet?
I think there's the walk-in closet. Yeah, there's, you're right, on that, that side, there's the.
Master bed and the walk-in closet and the laundry.
I defer to my boss.
You have to come up.
And I pushed mine over there.
So when we looked at that for privacy concerns, on that first floor, there is a.
No, this is only on the second floor.
On the second floor.
The laundry room, the walk-in closet, and the bathroom.
So the laundry room and the walk-in closet, I think that's doable. I'd have to think about the bathroom, only because I can't remember what other light comes into that bathroom.
Well, typically, having a frosted window doesn't affect the light that comes in, it's just that you can't, you wouldn't be looking down into your neighbor's rear yard.
Which is only the one? So, sure, that would be, we would consider that, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, you know, is anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to the commission on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll bring it back to the commission for deliberation and action.
Chairperson's story, may I add, you had talked about the findings, and that's actually under the new code, the new code that's applicable outside of the coastal area. There's six new findings for historic. However, under our conditional use permit section of our existing code that applies to this area, there are two findings that should be placed on this application if you were to approve it tonight for historic review. And I'll just quickly bring them up on the slide.
Yeah, if you could, please.
So under the section seventeen point six zero, and considering an application for involving a material change to a historic feature, the findings that have to be made are the action proposed will not significantly, will not be significantly detrimental to the historic feature in which the change in use is to occur, or the applicant has demonstrated that denial of the application would result in a hardship that is so substantial, I'm sorry, let me say. So that would be for denial.
So you make one of the following.
Right, one, I mean, yeah. But since you have that up, could you go to seventeen point eight four?
Yes, but that is, so as you'll see, it's under the outside of the coastal area.
Oh, uh-huh.
So it's the new code, so it wouldn't apply to this application.
Okay.
But seventeen point eight four is all your hard work that was put into the new zoning code to clarify how we treat historic preservation in Capitola. It's much clearer than the old code.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll lead off on comments if you're ready for that.
Yeah.
First, I want to thank you guys for putting up the orange netting and for redesigning the porch. I think that the new design really does look a lot more like the old place. I did go back and watch the video from our last meeting, and we talked a lot about the massing as it related to the historic house. And I think, when I go look at it now, the massing is set back far enough that it does not change the story of the historic. So I don't have any issues with the massing and the historic nature. At the same time, when I look around Depot Hill, I see a lot of historic cottages that are being restored, and the ones that I like the most, that I think tell the story the best, are the single-story ones. And there's only a couple of them. Most of the properties up there are being developed to include a second story. And I think when we stop and think about how families are changing and how they're growing and the extended family and getting the extended family together, you need some space to do that in. And two thousand square feet, and I think this is really close, to two thousand square feet, seems to be the minimum size for a house that families want to keep as an heirloom place or live full-time. And a lot of the houses on Depot Hill are going to need to go up because they can't get two thousand square feet on a single level. There are areas in Capitola, and I went back to the general plan, and it is part of our responsibility to protect the unique characteristics of a neighborhood. And Depot Hill is a very critical neighborhood for Capitola. Having said that, I completely lost my train of thought. The character that you're building into the house here from the street maintains the character of the neighborhood. The fact that it's two-story, we can't deny two-story houses all over town because there are single-story houses next door. So I think that, even though I would love to see a single-story design, I don't think it would yield an adequate size for what we want to do. And Capitola, I think, needs to encourage families to live here. And we're not going to be able to do that if we don't allow the properties to grow. So I think this property meets the requirements of the historic preservation. I would like to see a condition added so that if you get into fixing it up and you find it's about to fall down, because it looks pretty, it's pretty bad shape, that little house, that there should be conditions so it doesn't have to stall out and bring it all back for a review of how they can deal with the historic cottage. I can see the orange netting from my house in the jewel box, and I got my binoculars out, and I wish I could make my binoculars take a picture, because it's not really out of character in the skyline from looking across. Now, from the neighbor's perspective, when you've got a single-story house and the two-story house goes up right next to you, it's a big deal. But if you look along the front, is it grand or fair view that comes around the corner, we've got some real historic homes that are single-level right next to two-story, and I can imagine the conversation back then when, you know, they put in the two-story one, and it was overshadowing everything. But that is going to be what happens in Capitola. Because we're built out, you can't expand and go out in a single level everywhere that we would like to. It has to go up. But I think this is tastefully done.
All right. Thank you, Lyndon.
Yeah?
Next?
Okay. So, factors that seemed important to me in thinking about this and studying it are that they comply with all of the development criteria we have for that area, except only the historic portion in front. That's the only reason that any of these permits are needed, really, the variance, is because they're keeping the historic building, which doesn't have the correct setbacks. It's close, but it doesn't quite have them. But everything else totally complies. The building has about twenty-one hundred and fifty square feet, which is fifty-four percent of floor area ratio, which is the standard for Depot Hill, so they have not exceeded that. And so, everything is conforming. So I look, I kind of divide it into two issues. One is the compatibility with the neighborhood, and I spent two different sessions up there walking the neighborhood, and it's really a mixed bag. There are some very large two-story buildings in the neighborhood, and there are some small one-story buildings in the neighborhood. And I can't, it's hard for me to conclude that somehow this one, as proposed, is out of keeping with that mixed development of Depot Hill. And the second issue is more specific to the one neighbor who is potentially impacted by having a larger structure next to them. And so, that's a delicate issue that we deal with in a lot of different contexts. We, in some cases, we completely give no credence to the neighbors, and that's, for example, if you're, have a ocean view that's being blocked, we don't protect those. But then, in other cases, we try to balance the new building with the privacy rights of the neighbor. But it is a balancing, and it's not simply because one neighbor who put a lot of money maybe into their own property and then doesn't want to have the property next to them changed. That isn't a sufficient reason, in my opinion, to deny an application. And I will say, after twelve years on the planning commission, I've found that neighbors' fears about how their life will change as a result of the development of the adjacent property are usually very overstated in their mind. I mean, they're real, but it turns out, six months later, that it really isn't half as bad as they think it's going to be. So, all things put together, I think that this is a reasonable proposal, a reasonable attempt to deal with our historic preservation and to develop their property within the rules that we have. And I think that, we got a petition that a lot of people, some of them on Depot Hill, some of them in other parts of Capitola sign, and I really have to say, I put very little credence in that. First of all, the language of the petition, I didn't think, I don't agree with at all that this is extreme height, because it's, it's within the height limitation in Depot Hill, and that it's a massive size of the proposed addition, which is seven hundred and fifty square feet more. So I, I mean, I think this was, how this was proposed to people who signed the petition was very hyperbolic. And so I was not able to put much value to that. I do sympathize with the neighbors wanting the world to stay the same so it doesn't affect them in any way, but I support this application.
Thank you. Next, Susan?
I pretty much concur with my fellow commissioners. I think that the application has done a nice job dealing with the fact that they have to preserve the historical structure in front, and recognize that, you know, the city has decided that we want to preserve that part of the structure, and as a result, it puts some burdens on the applicant about how they can design the rest of their project. In this case, I agree with Commissioner Newman, that the new addition that's being proposed meets all of the city's requirements, its height requirements, its setback requirements, and for us, we need, we need to find some basis to deny an application, and when an application conforms to all of our requirements, plus goes the extra step of preserving the historic structure, which the community wants to keep, then I think we really don't have a basis for denying it. I would like to see a condition added to help out the neighbors on the, I think it's the two-twelve side of, you know, putting frosted windows in, in the three locations that I mentioned, the bathroom, the water closet, and the laundry room. We've done that in another number of other homes in Capitola. Really doesn't diminish the light, the windows still function, but it does help with, you know, providing some privacy to the neighbors next door. I like the fact that the building is set back, and I think we would like to see all residential units that are being built in Capitola be smaller, but as we've come to learn, that's really not the case. People, we have small lots, people are trying to build houses that size that's livable for their families, so I can't find reasons for not supporting this application.
Thank you. DJ?
Well, saved me a lot of speech, so I can throw my papers away. And I'll just move that we make a motion to approve the project with amendment of the master bedroom windows on the north side of the, yeah, on the north side, that's the laundry room, the bathroom, is it a walk-in closet?
In the walk-in closet.
Yeah, that we have those as frosted glass. And, you know, I commend the applicants, this is way too much drama for something like this on Depot Hill. It's just, to me, it's a little bit, it's embarrassing, to be honest with you. So, I appreciate that we can move this thing forward, and I would make a motion that we approve the application. And I'm sure the chairman may want to add some comments before that happens.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And, yeah, thank you, DJ. I would like to make some comments, and one, to thank the STs for putting up the story polls. I know that that was a little additional burden, but I think it was helpful, at least from the commissioner's standpoint, to see, it was helpful to me in seeing that the mass was not so large to override the architectural historian's conclusions. I think, I think that was really what I was looking for. And I did, I mean, one, yeah, this is, this application, we don't have separate set of standards for historical structures. It's the same basic rules about floor area ratio, height, setbacks that apply. And if there was no question of the historical significance here, this project, as many others in our community and on Depot Hill, have been approved. And, you know, the, I am sensitive to the neighbors and their feelings of invasion of their privacy, but that is not a controlling criteria that we use here. And it is not within our zoning code to take into consideration those kinds of concerns. But I did want to say, you know, I've lived on Depot Hill for thirty years, and I've, over the years, slowly seen it change. And I do understand, you know, the comments and the, the surveys that were petitions that were signed. I'm not driven by them, but I think I get the perspective of folks up there, and I talk to many of them. And they are concerned about how the character, and particularly many of the historic homes up there, are changing. And, but, you know, I think my perspective on that is that, you know, that's a matter for the city council to deal with, about whether there is significant enough interest in trying to preserve our historical resources in the community, and if we do, how do we do that? There are no, currently, there are no particular standards on how we would measure or gauge how that would be done, other than the Secretary of the Interior standards, which are met here. And in every other respect, the project complies with our requirements. And, you know, lastly, on the eighty percent rule, I did want to recognize that, yeah, trying to enforce that rule would mean moving the structure, the historical structure, which violates the Secretaries of the Interior's standards. And as commissioners know, I've had difficulties with the eighty percent calculations and how that's done, and have been reluctant to enforce compliance with variances under that. So with that, I think it will be a unanimous vote to approve this project. I would like to.
Before you call for a vote, though, the addition of the conditions so that if they get into rehabilitating the historic structure, they don't have to come back when they, if they find they can't do that.
I can ask the maker's a motion if you.
I can make a friendly amendment to add that, that they can work with staff to work out the materials with.
So you can put that.
Towards a preservation plan if reconstruction is necessary.
Right, fine with me.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd also like to add another amendment, and I think this is in deference to the neighbors on the north side of this project, is asking the applicant if they will make a good-faith effort to shift the second-story setbacks on the, on the second floor from, you know, I mean, there's six-three on the south side, six feet on the north side. Either split the difference or shift it completely the other way.
You know what, Sam, I can't, I can't go with that on my motion, because they have these alignment of the ridges and stuff. There's a lot of work that goes into that, three inches pulls that off, and it meets a setback requirement. Three inches pose that often, and it meets the setback requirement, so I'm, honestly, I'm not willing to make that amendment.
I second that.
All right.
I have the same sense, that I don't think an inch and a half is going to really make much difference for the neighbors.
Okay. Well, well, it's not being accepted, so I'll withdraw it. But, but sometimes I view, you know, a matter of inches can make all the difference in the world when people feel that you're looming up on top of them. And so, that was just a nod to that issue of privacy for the neighbors. So, but with that, it's been rejected, so I'll call for the vote, if everybody's ready to vote on this. Looks like we are. And let's, we'll take a roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner Welch?
Hi.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay.
Commissioner Westman?
Yes.
Best for last. And Chair Story?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes. So we'll move on to, well, I guess that, congratulations.
Congratulations.
We'll move on to the director's report.
No director's report this evening.
Any other commission communications?
I had one issue I would like to bring up. And it was when I was reviewing this application, and I looked at what our definition is for a bay window. And we've suddenly decided that, you know, any kind of alcove on a building is a bay window, as long as you put a window in it. And, you know, I think staff has been correctly interpreting what our ordinance says, but I'm wondering if that's something that we want to look at, because if you read what our current definition is, that's not my definition of a bay window, or why we came up with the idea that, you know, a bay window could encroach into the setbacks. So I wonder if I could get the commission to agree to, you know, have us look at that issue and study it a little bit, because-
I'd be willing to look at, sure.
Yeah. I just don't think the way it's written or what it allows people-
Is this under our new code, or is this the same?
So it's good you asked that question, because our new code, when this came up, I have the definition up of bay windows. And it actually is one of the most open bay window definitions I've ever seen in a code before. The fact that it can take up to 60% of the width of a building.
Right, yeah.
So, and, so, but in the new code, bay window is not listed. So we're going to, as staff, go through all of the definitions of the old code and the new code, and make sure there's no other missing definitions.
Okay.
And we'd be happy to bring those back to you.
Great.
And Coastal Commission, I should update you, is, has told me that they've made all their revisions, they're putting them into a summary again right now. So we should be getting some final edits from them, and then making a decision on our next step. So in that process, we could also look at what other revisions need to take place.
Great, thank you.
We probably have a running list of 10 items that we've noticed between the old code and the new code that need to be addressed this year. So with the start of the new year, we'll probably bring those forward. Unless you'd like, would you like bay windows at the December?
No.
Okay.
It can be a part of the process.
Okay, fantastic.
Just so somebody looks at it.
You know, and also, in the course of this particular project that we just dealt
with, you know, there were, and we asked for story posts to put up, and I heard comments about, there was no particular guidance on the city's website about, you know, how to do that, when to do that, what exactly it should, it should be showing, so. And I think that would be good for people, the neighbors, when they see it, so that maybe they can go and check and understand, well, what's this about? What is this, what am I looking at? And so-
We've drafted some guidance, and I can bring that to you at the next meeting during the director's report.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, with that, I'll adjourn this, oh, Ed, sorry.
Yeah, I had one communication, this is somewhat tongue-in-cheek. Is it somewhat?
I'll be right behind you with one.
So those of you who have been advocating a yes on Proposition L are mistaken. And those of you who have been advocating a no on Proposition L are also mistaken.
Yes. It's very convoluted.
In fact, the future of the railroad is neither a rail nor trail, it's a drone corridor. I have a scholarly article that I've made copies for commissioners.
Oh, good, no.
Well, thank you.
Be very excited.
I have one for the staff, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. So we'll just be able to fly across SoCal Creek.
Well, see, you need the railroad to deliver the Amazon packages and so forth. You can't have trains in the way, and you can't have bicycles anywhere.
They should.
This is good.
Well, I can't figure out how the drones are going to work anyway, so this will be interesting for me.
I just have one quick thing. I talked to Katie about this, but a lot of the confusion I came, I think, with this last project, I think that added to the confusion was the architect for the Arkansas Committee wrote commentary after his original findings, which was very misleading for the applicants, because they went off their way getting, thinking that the elevations were great, his wording was fine. And then later, after he was approached by this neighbor who, he had, he rethought his thing and put, put out this secondary letter. And so I think it's something, Arkansas, from my perspective, is really to help the applicants, kind of a preview check before it gets to us. So it helps them to make sure they're, got their ducks in a row. And then, if it gets to us, and all of a sudden, there's this big thing that the Arkansas is going against what they originally said, I think it's a little bit misleading and definitely put these applicants in a bad position. So maybe we could talk with, and we actually have reviewed how we're going to use Arkansas because of some of these issues, but-
Right.
I think that's something that maybe staff could talk with.
That was a really unusual circumstance, where the architect on Arkansas kind of did an about-face.
And I think Arkansas has to follow the same Brown Act rules that we all follow in our meeting. So I think if they're going to change their position, you know, they have to sort of reschedule the application and bring it back to Arkansas and do it in a public forum. I don't think that you can do those kinds of things afterwards and that not be a violation of the Brown Act.
I would agree.
So it's probably important to have a discussion with the architect there. And, you know, we do hire people who are sort of laypeople, so sometimes they're unfamiliar with the rules.
As we have new appointments coming up with the new year, I'll make sure to have those conversations with the, and then in the future, the role of Arkansas is going to change dramatically, in that there will not be a local architect and a local historian. It'll be more of a contract that we, for larger projects and for historic projects, go out to these individuals and ask them to participate, so.
It'll be nice when we have one zoning ordinance for our community. Because I did the same thing you did a couple times, I pulled things up and then went, oh, no, I've got the wrong zoning ordinance, this is the wrong place. And so-
It's keeping us on our toes.
It'll be nice to have that finalized. I think it'll make it a lot easier for houses that do have a historical component or a non-conforming component to come through, because, you know, I don't-
Yeah, there would have been no 80%.
80% is gone.
There would have been no 80% rule, there would be, it'd be much simpler, you know, for the applicants.
Ken, I know you've said this before on the 80% rule, it's misleading to think that the cost analysis that we go through has anything to do with fair market value.
Yeah.
Right.
And so to have the presentation say it's fair market value is completely-
Well, that's why we scrapped it.
Completely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we just haven't got Coastal Commission-
Right.
-approval yet to implement.
It would be nice that this group could have seen it totally implemented before they-
Yes.
Yeah, it would, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it would.
One area that's come to our attention is in the non-conforming, how it was set up. For, we keep thinking that the non-conforming, under the new code, with the 80% going away, it is limited to additions that are 50% of the existing building. So for a really small home, it's going to really limit what they can do to keep that non-conformity. So I think that may be one, one area that we want to revisit as we go forward, because we were looking recently, what's the address?
205 Magellan.
205 Magellan, that property. That was a bigger home that was having, getting an addition, but they were over the 50% threshold. So under that scenario, they would not have been able to do their addition under the new code, because the square footage is more than 50% of the existing.
Since 90% of the city's non-conforming, right?
Yeah, so we may want to, in the new year, just think about, we'll give some real examples and how that plays out, and we may want to rethink what the threshold is for a lot, you know, when we allow them or not. So I think that was a change that came in at the end, the 50%, so.
There'll be a lot of tweaks-
Yeah, there'll be tweaks.
...be made over the next first couple of years.
Once we get through the hurdle of the Coastal Commission approval.
And during the appeal of that, the council suggested that we modify the code to build in an allowance within the Cliffwood Heights neighborhood to allow up to a certain setback, so they're no longer considered non-conforming, it would be legal. So that was a good-
That's good. Yeah. Okay, anything else with that? I'll adjourn this meeting. Good night, everyone.
Have a good trip.
Thank you.
I hope everybody hasn't-